We'll call this meeting to order. If you would please call the roll.
Chairman Wykoff?
Present.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Here.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Noble?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr?
Here.
Commissioner Leroux?
Here.
All right, we got a full house. Thank you, everyone. So now is our time for public comment. I see no public, but I will make the announcement. If you'd like to make a make public comment, you're welcome to do so. We ask you to reserve for to reserve your comments for three minutes and to topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If you do come up, want to say anything, give us your name and address for the record. Anyone? No one. Okay. I'll need a motion for approval of May's minutes, please.
I make a motion to approve May's minutes as written.
Thank you. Second from anyone?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve May's minutes, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Leroux?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. Thank you. The minutes are approved. So our next item up is new business. And we only have one item. It appears of new business, and that is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight regarding fences. Who wants to start?
I will start.
Okay.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight, an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, amending Division Three, landscape fences, gates, hedges, and walls of Article Six supplementary district regulations of Chapter One Ten zoning of the city's land development code to revise the definition of building line, to add a provision for openings, to revise the provision related to open fences, to prohibit fences over three feet in intersection visibility triangles, to amend height, front, side, and rear yard requirements, to include a provision for fences around swimming pools, and to add a non-conforming fence, gate, hedge, or wall provision, providing for conflict codification and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Very nice. Thank you. Who from our city would like to take the reins now?
Hi, my name is Joe Pataglia. Been with the city a little less than a year. And if you recall last month's meeting, I discussed the fence code a little bit. We also took it to the Board of Commissioners workshop before the last meeting. So we took the feedback from that meeting, feedback from this meeting, brought it to the city attorney, took feedback from them, and then discussed it internally once more, and then here's our final draft.
Okay.
So starting on page fourteen. Then the biggest change between this and what you guys saw last month is really just the the non-conforming. That was a big topic that we talked about last time, and I'll show you how we address that shortly. And that is, so we addressed it in the building line definition. Instead of changing the non-conforming section of the fence code, what we did is we changed the building line definition to basically say, make it less restrictive. Say, so originally, when we first discussed this, we talked about how the fence height would have to change based on the setback. Right now, just to remind everyone, it's based on the building line, which non-conforming structures, it's different for every structure. And then we discussed changing it to the setback line of the primary structure, which would make it the same for everyone in that zoning district. But then there was the discussion about, well, if there's a non-conforming structure on a really small lot, then they wouldn't be able to get a fence as far as some of their neighbors. So we changed some of the verbiage here to say that it'll be the less restrictive of the of the two, whether that be the setback line of the building, or if there's a house that's already built beyond that setback, then they can get their fence up to the house line. So we felt like that was the best way to address that. And then also, we added some verbiage. Well, then there's that issue if if the neighbor's house goes a little farther than yours, and it's also beyond the setback. So we addressed that also by saying the furthest vertical structural member of the primary structure on the subject property or the abutting neighbor's shared property line. So this is kind of a black and white answer. And it's not, um, what's the word? It's, yeah, it's it's kind of not left open to interpretation.
Good.
And that's how we addressed the non-conforming. Continuing down. Most everything else is the same from how we discussed last week, last month. The intersection, the, uh, we also another change. We, if you remember from last month, we had a number ten about temporary construction fencing. We decided not to add that in. The only thing we're adding in about contemporary construction fencing is going to be. Where is it? Number two. We just add a little section about
Exempted.
That it's, yeah, it's not going to be mentioned in this section. And just to reiterate, temporary construction fencing will be brought more in depth in a late different section of the code that's specifically going to be about temporary construction fencing. That'll be brought in a later meeting. So that the only thing we're talking about temporary construction fencing here is just saying that it's not going to be, it's going to be exempt from this section of the code.
And just, um, we do have caveats in our code too about construction fencing required. So that is still addressed in our code.
Okay.
And then continuing down, I'm on page seventeen at the bottom is the swimming pool fencing, which already exists. We haven't changed this from last month's meeting, but just to reiterate, it already exists in our code. We're just kind of bringing it here so that whenever someone wants to build a fence, it's all black and white. Everything's on the same section. When we lay out black and white, how if you have a property on the water and there is a swimming pool, you're technically not allowed to have a fence that's more than three feet. But if you have a swimming pool, there has to be a fence that's four feet. So this kind of lays out exactly what you need to do, and that's a a four-foot open fence or a hybrid with the top foot being open. And then finally, the non-conforming section that we're adding to the fence code. Just to, this hasn't also, this also hasn't really changed much since last month's meeting, but the, there's non-conforming sections in other sections of the code, but not in the fence code. And we just want to add a little verb here to show that any new fences would have to meet this section of the code. And
And we have that definition codified elsewhere, right, on what requires a permit for the?
What requires a permit? That would be in eighty-two dash two. This is our definition section on what requires a permit.
Yeah.
So this would basically say that all fences would have to meet this code. If this wasn't here, then it's kind of a gray area. It would have to go to the regular non-conforming section, which technically means it wouldn't always have to meet the code, but this kind of puts it black and white.
Cool. I like it.
Cool. That's everything I have. So our recommendation is to see if there was any other feedback from you guys. If not, we recommend approval to bring it to the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Excellent. Anything else to add from you guys?
Other than I think, um, with Jay, I mean, Joe coming on for the year now, I think he was really surprised about how hard fence permitting was. And he made it a goal to get this corrected.
Looks like you did a heck of a job. Thank you. Yeah, everything's hard here. Because it's, you know, we have so many non-conforming lots and all these little tiny things, and it's same in Treasure Island. You know, it just seems to be, everything was here, then we went, okay, let's make rules now, and tried to lay that blanket over top of everything. And, you know, we're trying to unwind all that, and you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
So the temporary, the temporary construction fence, you're going to bring that back in front of us, or you just? Okay, because that, remember, we talked about you were giving them a week to take it out.
Yes.
After construction's over. So that's, that's later.
So that will be later in the special temporary construction fencing code. So we took that two days, the two weeks, we just removed that completely from
Yeah, this makes much more sense for a guy who just put in a fence with three permits.
Yeah.
We knew you'd appreciate it.
So I do one, one thing, and I'm not sure that the question will come up, but my little devious mind comes up with this. On page fourteen, where we have the the big correction, the addition of the furthest vertical structure member of the primary structure on subject property or the abutting neighbor's property. Does that need to say that a budding neighbor's property nearest to where the fence is? Because if, you know, some of our, some of our homes are L-shaped, and only one part is beyond the setback. Does that allow them on both sides to go to that?
So that's kind of why, why we put a budding neighbor's line. Originally, I put like neighbor's line, but then it's like, oh, what about the other neighbor? So we felt that this was the most clear way to say
Okay.
only the neighbor directly next to the one that with the shared property line.
Okay. Cool. All right.
I have a question for you.
Any commission member? Yeah, Mr. Connolly.
If you put up a block wall as a fence, your blocks are basically six inches wide. And if you want to stone face it both sides, you'd be out of the requirement which says cannot be greater than six inches.
What, are you looking at the? Are you looking at the open fence requirements? Where are you, where are you seeing that six inches?
I'm on forty-five, yeah, open fence. But I'm just saying, if you built a block wall, which is six inches, and you wanted to face it mainly decorative stone, you would be wider than six inches if you did both sides.
Actually, block walls are eight inches.
Well, you can get a six-inch block.
Typically, they're eight-inch block.
You guys have to fight it out.
That's a construction block.
You're absolutely right. It's still wider. Yeah.
Yeah, it's still wider.
Just wouldn't be allowed to do it. According to way it's written.
That would be for, that would be for open fences. I'm trying to
Yeah, I don't see anything about block walls.
So the block walls would be limited, would be treated like a solid fence. Limited to three feet in height, and the entirety of that would have to be located on your property. So that would be a solid fence, and we wouldn't, it wouldn't be hold. I'd have to, let me, I can revisit the verbiage here exactly, make sure we don't not allow for that, especially if it's three feet, it would be allowed, solid, entirely on your property. And we definitely, you know, that would be reasonable if somebody wanted to do something like that. So we can make sure we have not done that. So if I go out of open fences, let's see.
I don't, I don't see anything that limits the size of the fence other than the open fence.
Right.
And wall means a non-bearing landscape wall. So it would go there and has no limitations there.
Because it's not here. There's nothing, there's nothing in this about block. I have block three quarters around my house.
Well, I mean, it says what it can be, the materials that the fence can be in walls. Traditional building materials, brick, stone, stucco, over concrete block, finished concrete, metal, vinyl, wood, natural, stained or painted, composite products, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, and then when you go to like rear yards, side yards, all fences, walls, like on side yards, all fences, hedges, and walls must not exceed six feet. So it's covered there, your wall. Front yards, again, it mentions walls, which would fall into what you're talking about, as does the rear yards, I believe, reads the same as well. Yes, walls. So walls are covered in each front yard, side yard, and rear yard under one-ten dash four-four-seven. And so the walls would fall under there and would not have the limitation you're talking about. The only height, the only restriction is the solid three feet limited in the rear, then the side yards can be six. And then that would be how we would interpret that.
Good catch.
And, and open, open fences has a set definition and criteria in in the code that that a solid block fence wouldn't, wouldn't meet, fall under that category.
Right. Good. Anybody else got anything? Motion? Anyone? Who's up? I'm going to have like a a chip that I'll drop on somebody's table.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if we have two neighbors and their buildings, let's say, ten feet apart, ten feet from the property lines, and then your, your fence would have to line up with the, with the face of the building, right? And if both properties want to put fences up, then you have that distance in between that's hiatus, that's like, you know, makes it look like it's nobody's
Land, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, does that even make sense?
You're saying distance in between the fences, if both people wanted to?
Yeah, it's the distances between, the distance between the two fences. It just like, you know, just like a little alley that nobody can maintain. I guess they could come around a fence and mow it, but it just makes it like a doesn't make sense.
So technically, they could both put the fence against the property line, and they could have back-to-back fences if they didn't want to work together and and share a fence. That would be allowed. That's still allowed, and that's not something that's being changed. As for like a little alley, if they, for some reason, want to have a fence within their property lines, then I guess hypothetically, there could be an alley with in between the property lines. That's not something we've seen or foresee seeing. But if they, they both are able to put the fence along their property lines. So if they didn't want to work together and share a fence, then they could both hypothetically have their own fences back-to-back.
Yeah.
If that answers your question.
Yes. Thank you.
And I, I will say, when we do our permits, we, 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 we we can do them with conditions. So if we catch that, we can put a condition in there that, you know, you've elected to stay two feet off your property, creating this vacant space, and you will be responsible for maintenance and care and stuff like that. So we're pretty good with adding conditions and catching things like that.
Okay. Thanks.
If you share a fence, it can be on both properties, right? It can straddle the?
Yep, it could be along the property line.
There, I haven't seen a fence that isn't an encroachment in a long time. Fence guys are, you know, anyway, don't get it on the line all the time. So, um, but I don't, I haven't seen that where somebody had put, you know, miss it by that much, you know, and have a, have a weed row in the middle there, I guess. Uh, we haven't seen that around anywhere.
No, it's not coming.
Okay. Sure. Fair enough. All right, anymore? Or a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. A second?
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Noble with a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Leroux?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. That motion passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. And, um, any other administrative or staff presentations before our next adventure? Good. Okay. So number seven on the agenda is planning commission discussion. Under that, we have our John's Pass Village Activity Center zoning workshop. Who wants to start that?
I, I can start that and clarify what what's going on tonight. So after doing the, the public workshops in in April and getting a feedback from from you, you guys, the Board of Commissioners, and and residents, and, and also, we looked at, um, the previous, like, the Dwanee Plan and a couple other activity, similar activity centers, like I, we looked at, uh, Denidens in there, because it's, it's kind of similar in size and scale to what we're, would be proposing. We developed a, it's a rough draft of an ordinance for, uh, the, the, the land development regulations for the John's Pass Village Activity Center. Basically, the like the participants from the public workshops, and this is what we kind of drafted into the ordinance was to protect the existing built environment and characteristics of the John's Pass Village Activity Center and nearby neighborhoods, maintain height limits similar to existing built structures, but do not increase height limits to be as high as previously approved planned developments or variances, and focus on pedestrian-friendly designs that enhance walkability. Attached to the memo is, is the draft of the ordinance. It's split up into different sections, like how our zoning is normally set up in our land development regulations. Kind of, the, the, a difference, though. We have, uh, like maps and figures that that would be included in the ordinance to show the character districts. This was done to make it easier to understand. Instead of trying to shoehorn the existing zoning that's down there over that land, it, it'd make more sense to just have the, like a, like a like a sub-map that has the character districts in it. So it's much easier for, for, uh, property owners, residents to understand what, what can be done down there. The sections are split up as principal uses, which is, um, like primary uses that you could do with the property. Um, and each character district has its own allowed uses. Next is accessory uses. So, so each one has some of these were influenced by what was existing allowed in in the categories, zoning categories down there. We're still going to be prohibiting drive-throughs in in the village like we, we currently do in in our code. Under special exception uses, so that would be, you have to go through the special magistrate to do a special exception use, and they would have to be approved there. So some of them are, was from the previous zoning, others. One, one thing that was kind of a unique thing down there is there are a couple of commercial buildings along the beach side of Gulf Boulevard, but just on the Gulf Boulevard side, not on the beach. So we did, um, have a special exception use for certain commercial uses, but only fronting Gulf Boulevard, because we don't want people doing restaurants and other, standalone restaurants next to people's single-family homes, because that wouldn't be right. We don't, we don't want that. But there are some commercial structures where the people have had a tough time kind of figure out what to do with them, because they're, they're kind of stuck in almost like a, a legal, non-conforming use, even though they're fronting Gulf Boulevard, which is ma- major commercial corridor. But because they were zoned R-three, it was kind of like, like tough to really find a use for those properties. So, and then there were vacant lots that that were are currently vacant next to those commercial, uh, uses. Let me just, so next section is building site area requirements. Lot sizes are pretty similar, uh, to what's currently in like the C-one, C-two, and R-three zoning districts. So not much cha- change with that. The setback requirements, um, were, were based off of like feedback from, from those public workshops, and, and we did look at, at the, uh, Dwanee Plan a bit on this. One thing we did notice when we were doing, um, tours down of John's Pass with, uh, the commissioners was that, uh, on the boardwalk side, the, the, the public right-of-way and the prop, there's not really room between the, where the curb is of the street and the property line compared to the other side where you, you do have a very wide sidewalk. So we, on the boardwalk side, we are requiring a ten-foot setback fr- from, from that curb. Just because we want to make sure that when someone goes in and built like that, there's enough room, and it's pedestrian-friendly, because we don't want someone building a structure right up onto the curb of our public right-of-way, because that, that wouldn't be good. And then it would just be kind of shadowing over the, the streets. So we, we did want because elsewhere through, there, there's a, there's a good amount, the right-of-way is pretty wide, and, and the sidewalks are pretty wide, but that area was kind of a tight area. So we had, had to allow for a little more setback there, just to, to, to make it and it's still a reduction from what's currently required, but it, it, we, we couldn't do the zero feet there, because then it would just lead to structures being right up on the curb. And then, so the setbacks, another thing we did, and we, we've heard this countless times, that people don't like these square buildings. So what we did was we're going to require people to have the upper floors, and this varies between each character district, have to be stepped back. So for example, in the commercial core, for floors above the second floor, they have to be stepped back ten feet. So the reason for doing that is so you don't get these big square buildings that are imposing over the streets. Because, because you want, because the thing is, there are built like that, that are, have some, like the parking garage, for example, is six floors, but the, the, the part that's fronting the street is only two floors, and the garage part is set back. So, and so you can't even really see it, because it's set back. So we, so something like the Cambria, for example, wouldn't be able to be built down there, because it wouldn't, the upper floors aren't set back, for example.
I got a quick question here. So are there going to be six separate districts? Like, they're not going to be C-ones, R-ones, they're going to be separate and basically titled boardwalk, commercial, commercial core, and the area is going to be site-specific?
Correct. You, you're going to have those character districts that will have the, the, all those requirements, because we want to make sure, because each character district really has like unique like uses and other character. So like, like, that's the best way to do it. Well, and so on the zoning map, it would be a single color over it, but then in the ordinance, you'd have that sub-map with the character districts. Um, and that was just the cleanest way to do it. We've seen other cities. That's how they, they do it when they have an activity center. Clearwater for their downtown area has it set up where they have a single color on their zoning map, but they have a character district map. So it was just, it's just the cleanest, easiest way to understand. It's trying to shoehorn the existing, it just, it just, we tried doing that, and it just, it wa- we want to make sure this is a clear, easy-to-understand process and not, and not try to confuse people. Okay, so yeah, the, yeah, the setback section is pretty long, because there's a lot of different lot sizes and different kinds of structures. And I, I think that's kind of one of the, the unique things down there is, is you have all these different types of uses. So we've had to really kind of figure out, well, if you have an acre of land, you can do this with your property, but if you have like, I don't know, like point one-five acres, this is what you can do. So a, as you can see, like, it can, it can vary on, on use and lot size. One thing we did try to do is the larger lot sizes, we, we did try to require a little more setback. Just, just just to make sure, especially on, on the beach side, because we know there's kind of a mix between kind of, there, there's some condominiums, there's some hotel with Barfa Beach Club, and then there's some single-family and duplexes and stuff mixed in. So we want to make sure those, like, kind of multifamily condominiums and hotels and stuff like have enough setback from like the, the other residential uses. And then, and then the density stuff, that's the same as what's in, in the, that was in the special area plan and, and the land use change so that, but we also have maps, so it shows and, and shows what the densities are, uh, clearly. The height, um, based on feedback. We, we tied it to the size of the lot, because we didn't want people to try to max out and do tall, skinny buildings. One of the things we did do in the low-intensity mixed uses, it, it, originally, we were proposing forty-four feet, but we reduced it to thirty-four based on, I guess, the context of it, but, but all the heights are tied to, uh, like lot size. The heights proposed, they're all significantly less than, than stuff like, like Barfa Beach Club or Madera Bay, so we're not legalizing those heights. Like, the max fight, our height real, is fifty, fifty-five feet from design flood elevation to the eve line of the roof, so that, that would potentially be five stories of living space over one floor of parking. It is a similar height to what was proposed in the Dwanee Plan in the R-three zoning district. Um, and we thought that was reasonable, because Dwanee, the Dwanee, with the Dwanee Plan, they wanted to make it pedestrian-friendly, and they didn't want to have big, massive high-rises. So we thought that was a reasonable. And they didn't want to have big massive high rises. So we thought that was a reasonable compromise too. And also there are. Buildings down there like, like, like Madeira Norte and Beach Place that are the five stories over one floor of parking. And previously those were built to the, before the, the more recent zoning was adopted in the eighties. The height limit down there was. Was sixty feet from grade, which ended up being back then. Five floors of living space over one floor of parking. Above the eve line. It would, would be like, like, so like if you have like a, like architect, architectural features. Because we know, we know certain people, they don't really like the flat roofs and we want to allow for some flexibility. What we don't want to allow and what, what we're making sure to not allow. Would be the, someone try to sneak an extra floor above that, like the, that area above the eve line, that's supposed to be only for. For access to like mechanical equipment and like, like, like architectural features and have in, you have like a kind of like a special like. Like roof. So we, we wanted to avoid trying to like, because, because what happens is if, if we did, like. Currently we have people that'll just max out and then they'll just do a flat roof, which we, and which a lot, which doesn't look like a lot of the buildings down there. So we wanted to allow for flexibility so we get kind of the, the unique kind of buildings we want down there. So, and then it explains further. So we, I did a map of the height limits and then we have the densities and intensities. So this is just more just what, what's allowed base. And this, this, it matches up with what was in the, the special area plan. So one thing I, we did work on. And we'll definitely want feedback on our design standards and guidelines. So this. Kind of shows what we expect. So for example, we want to make sure that. Your mechanical equipment is shielded. We don't, we don't want that stuff exposed. Like we want to make sure that stuff's hidden. Certain newer buildings do have that stuff hidden, like there's a, this mixed use. Building that's kind of a turquoise color that does have, has the dumpster hidden and has the AC units shielded. And, but that's one of the few build, a lot of the older buildings don't have that. So. So basically the, the next couple are design, are design standards, just similar to what currently exists. And, and basically any, any, anything new going in would need to meet these standards. But I, I, I hope that kind of, this is just a draft version. You guys aren't voting on it tonight. We, we, we would hope to, to bring an actual ordinance version potentially in July or August, depending. We, we have, we, we need, we still need Ford Pinellas. To, to look through it and give their blessing on it. But we wanted to get your feedback first before we send it off to Ford Pinellas because it could take a couple of weeks for them to review it.
So I have a question on. All along Gulf Lane as an example, which would be in the John's Pass Resort District, or at least part of it is. There are some smaller lots and they're zoned, they're going to be zoned for eighteen units an acre. But is, are we still retaining the minimum lot size per unit type deal? Like, you know, a. Single unit requires X number of square feet, two units requires X number of square feet per unit.
Yeah, we, we have to just because, so tho- those lot minimum size are, are usually based off the density. So unfortunately, like that, that we're kind of locked.
I got you. So it's just, it's, you can just do the straight math off the density.
Yeah, that, that's how, that's how it was.
That makes it simple. Because I know it's elsewhere in some of our codes, there's density, but it seems like. Where we ran into that duplex issue on Fourth Street, right? There was duplex there. If you hadn't torn it down, you could rebuild a duplex, but it got torn down. Now a duplex can't go there. Zone for it because there wasn't enough land mass to accommodate the duplex. In, in my head, I'm trying to think of the math there was, would the math work out the same?
I, I mean, that's kind of the, the challenge. Honestly, our hands are tied with residential density. The county did, does not. And actually, that's what killed the previous version of this back in the two thousands. So after the Duane Plan. They passed a resolution, the consultants came up with a comprehensive plan ordinance for it. And what happened is the state and county rejected it because they were, it was going to increase residential density, which was. The state didn't want it back then. They still, they don't want that now. We actually removed some residential density because there was still some on the boardwalk that we took away. So like they, they basically was either keep it the same or take it all away. So we, we kept it. Outside the boardwalk area, we kept it the same. So unfortunately, we're, our hands are kind of tied on that. I, I know it's, we, we would like to allow, have a little with the smaller lots. We did try to. Adjust some of the minimum lot sizes to try to give a little flexibility. Like we, we ended up with the building site area going really based off of. We removed some of the, the, the minimum lot size requirements, but it still has to meet the density. I'd have to do the math on it to see how, how, how much lot area you need per, per unit. But.
Well, based on eighteen an acre, it's twenty four hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah, yeah, that, that sound, that sounds right. So. We did give a little more flexibility with that because, because currently usually the law is like about four thousand. Because we wanted to allow for a little bit more of the, so people could build kind of a like smaller. Residential things on those lots so they can use them. Because, because we want, we want people to be able to use their property reasonably. But, but we were limited on the, on the, on the density thing based, based on the, the, the county, county and state's limitations related to that.
Okay.
And there is a process by which you can retain what you have if you're nonconforming. Unfortunately, the example you gave.
Right.
Things got out of.
Scrapping it, yeah, erased that.
Correct.
Ability under, yeah.
I have a question, Chairman. So when we talk about density, are we, we're looking at residential. And we're looking at overnight accommodation, right?
Correct.
So, so what's the difference between density for overnight accommodation versus density for residential?
Let me just go to the, the, that section. Yeah. And, and this more like matched what was. So the buy right temporary lodging density. Varies by character district. As, as you know, I would like the boardwalk doesn't allow for any residential or temporary lodging density. The buy right in the commercial core and John's Pass Resort is sixty. Which is equal to what the commercial general category. Allowed before we had to reduce it. And then. The John's Pass Resort, the previous maximum was seventy five buy rights. So we reduced that to sixty. We do have the county's alternative temporary lodging use standards, which requires. The Board of Commissioners to adopt a development agreement, which has, has specific criteria in the countywide rules. Related to design, mobility. And also with that, one, you, you have to count the parking structures as part of the FAR as another restriction. So, but these were all, this was all adopted with the, with the ordinance, the, the twenty twenty three dash zero one. So it just, it just matches what's in the special area plan. Which during that vote, the board did reduce it for, for the max. So it, it was reduced compared to the ones you guys voted on.
Is there a maximum unit area for overnight accommodation?
We, we don't have a, a room size limit. We, we wanted to use FAR as that restriction.
For residential and overnight accommodation?
Yeah, well, it's kind of compared to the other parts of the, so FAR is, is all inclusive. In the activity center. That was one, one thing the county allowed us. So basically, all, all the air conditioned space. Counts towards that FAR. While in other, other areas, it might just only be for the commercial use of it. But for, in, in, in John's Pass, it's, it's an all inclusive FAR. So, so if you're, let's say you're proposing something, it would have to meet the density and the FAR.
Alright, so, so the FAR and density, i- is FAR also the same for. Density as it is intent, as it is. FAR is for overnight accommodation versus residential?
It's, it's the same except if it's the alternative temporary lodging use standards. Where it is slightly higher, but you have to count the parking structure. So. There, there are trade offs with, with, with going to the board and asking for that through a development agreement. So, but the max buy right is a two FAR. But that's like an all inclusive. So that's like all the air conditioned. Space. So that, like if you did a mixed use building, that'd be all the air conditioned commercial. And all day air conditioned residential condominiums or temporary lodging units, whatever mixed use thing you're doing. Down there or, or single use because there are areas that, that. People would be doing just single use like a small, smaller multi-family building.
What, what does the maximum stay for overnight?
I'd have to check our condo hotel section. I, I know we have some restrictions mentioned there.
Let me, let me explain the fear I have in general terms, and I think Marcy may agree with me. Is that you, I, I know you have limiting, you have, you have created limitations for certain parts of it. But you could go and design for overnight accommodation to get more density. And use it as residential. If, if we don't have a way of monitoring the length of stay, then who's to say that, you know. One could go and design for higher, higher than, uh, intensity. And density.
So, so in our, in our code, I'm, I'm just going to pull up the condo hotel. Part because that does have the restrictions. And then the county with the alternative temporary lodging use standards. Prohibits converting it into residential units, like it would violate the development agreement if, if that took place. But in our code currently, and this would still affect whatever gets adopted there. So here's our requirements for condo hotels. Madeira Bay, for example, is a condo hotel. A condo hotel means a hotel motel tourist or seasonal accommodation room or group of rooms forming a separate habitable unit used or which. Could be used for living and sleeping by one family with independent kitchen facilities. Each unit shall be owned by an independent or, or by an individual corporation. Or any other legal entity having membership into an association comprised of all owners within the same development. No unit in a condo hotel shall be used as a timeshare or fractional ownership unit or be converted to a permanent non-tourist dwelling unit.
That, that I, I knew. But. Okay, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just explaining to you what my fear is as far as, you know, designing for. Overnight accommodation, but using it for residential if there is no way to monitor. And, and especially when it comes to overnight accommodation, you can build those units much, much bigger. And, you know, then it becomes more conducive to overnight, to, to residential use.
Yeah. I, I mean, I mean, they still have to meet, the height limits are, are pretty restrictive down there compared to other beach communities. And they still have to meet the height setbacks at FAR. We just wanted to give some flexibility because. They're, they're, we want to have like unique. Accommodations down there. We don't want like generic, whatever, like other places are, are, are doing. So. Some people do like kind of the, the units that are closer to being more like. That have more amenities than others, but it still would have to look and feel like John's Pass. And, and meet those, those height limits are more restrictive than other beach communities have. We, we could. I mean, we could add a reference to the condo hotel section. I was, I was going to pull up the county's requirements too, that they would also have to meet that we do reference. But that, that's why we, it's just, we just didn't want to like, we, we felt like we had enough restrictions. Through the FAR and height and setbacks. To restrict and avoid allowing for too much.
We don't have anything in the codes that restricts the length of time a non-owner can stay.
I think it's three months. I, I've, I've seen it someplace that was three months and, but. Ninety days. That's what I had seen somewhere.
It says in the could be available to the owner for use no more than ninety days within the calendar year. So be available for lease to parties other than the owner in intervals of thirty days or less.
Yeah, it's a, it looks like thirty days.
Okay, thirty day thing. There we go. E, but I think we're violating that a lot. As we have, we have our northern visitors that come for three, four months at a time.
And the other question I had, it has to do with height. DFE, obviously, we, we measure the height from design flood elevation. But as you know, at the ground level, we can always build retail as long as we flood proof the building. So. We could get a bonus floor if we designed it correctly. So would you still measure everything from DFE even if you put a ground floor retail?
We, we would because you'll still lose some of it to parking. There are, there like, there's a turquoise building where half of the, the ground is, is the flood proof retail. While the other half is parking behind the structure and partially under the building. So.
Wouldn't the floor area ratio kick in then too?
Yeah, yeah, it would be the, the air condition, whatever air conditioned space there is would be included in that. So that, that would be another limiting factor. We do want some, we do want ground floor retail because we, we want to make sure that it's interactive at, at grade. So people are, they're not just walking by like, like parking garages and parking lots and. Because, because John's Pass has that, that ground floor retail. So we wanted to kind of preserve and promote that. But as, as I said, the height limits are, are much lower than a lot of other, other places allow. And it's still less than what, what we, we, that our board approved with, with Barfa Beach Club a few years back. Because we get that residents, they don't want super tall buildings. So. The height, the height limit we, we did was, is, is pretty similar to what was allowed pre nineteen eighty three or, or what was proposed in the Duane Plan. In, in two thousand and two.
Who, who has authority over design guidelines and standards? On buy right development?
The certain projects would have to come as a major site plan review. And that's a section of the code. I think we, we are looking to update and, and. And change kind of what, what projects would, would need to come through because we want to make sure that like. That, that the community is getting input on, on, on more projects. So. So anything that's a major site plan review. So mo- most, most of the temporarily, temporary logging stuff coming through. Would, would probably hit that, hit that density requirement or, or most commercial uses. Anything small resident, also the other thing is by state statutes, like single family homes were not allowed to like have design standards for them. It's, it's a weird thing. I asked Ford Pinellas about it and they were like, yeah, that's what it says. And I was like, wow, that's a, I, I wonder how that got. Put into state law, but we got kind of, but, but we can definitely, most of the, like, most. A good amount of the commercial or temp would come, would probably qualify as a major site plan review, which you guys would have to see.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it just seems like. When we call it character districts and then we don't have any codified authority over the character.
What the character should be, yeah.
Like it feels like there should be. Like, it feels like there should be more of a check. I know we don't have that elsewhere, and I know we've talked about different things that have come up before. Where it's like, hey, can you do this or do that? And it's always just a request and we don't have any real authority or or over. Hey, actually, I know it says it's a guideline, but we kind of need you to do this or or whatever. I feel like it should be codified. This seems like the type of place where that would make sense, because we want it to be a certain way.
Yeah, especially in the commercial core, the boardwalk and the traditional village areas. The other ones, not so much maybe, but. Ones that are really tight within John's Pass.
But a- and and it's one of those things where it's like. We can talk about FAR and density and intensity and that kind of creating a funnel of things, but. Ultimately, that funnel is not going to capture every project, so it's kind of like, how do we? Do it in such a way that will capture projects that are not resident, not residential, obviously, but could be. Um scrutinized, I guess.
I I know event, we do want to bring in a separate ordinance from this related to a site plan review. As we 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 know that that is a a big kind of concern to have have more input related to that. I just pulled up our what it currently says in our code, so pretty much. I I guess the challenge is a lot of this stuff that's either being built right now was approved years and years ago. Before a lot of you guys were on planning commission and it finally got underway. Or it's small enough where it didn't qualify to require the major site plan review. Um but as of right now, anything like multifamily with more than thirteen units or commercial. Or new construction over um. Like, that's for non-residential, so for commercial uses over two thousand square feet. Require the major site plan review, so I I think most stuff that that would be coming through would probably end up being a major site plan review for you guys. Uh did you guys look through the design standard section? Because it because it lists a lot of the requirements. That that are in our, that they would have to meet. And if they did come through the major site plan review, you would make sure that they're they are meeting these guidelines. And then also in the setbacks, we did, we're not allowing that those bigs or or the the square brick or s- square buildings. So some of the ones that I we've heard people complain about, they wouldn't be allowed to be built. Just just based off of what's what's in our in being proposed in the code. Uh so, but but yeah, um if you want us to add or look to see if we get, we're allowed to add. Any anything additional to these design standards and design guidelines, where I'm I'm happy to take down notes. And see if we're we're allowed to do that, just to um unfortunately, the state preempts us on on certain things, so I I I don't want to say, oh, yeah. You can do that and then find out uh state statute, so and says we can, so. Uh but I I would, I I'm happy to take down and and check to see if we're allowed to do that or not.
Yeah, I mean, I just. To me, and if I'm not understanding this correctly, but you know, the benefit of having. Development standards for a special district is that we can maybe implement some things that aren't. That are more restrictive than the code of ordinances, right? Like if we wanted to implement some something more of a strict. Like a more strict review process in this area versus what's codified here. Doesn't the, isn't this a vehicle that we can do something like that? Obviously, if it's within legal bounds.
Yeah, I I mean, it still has, I I mean, I guess the challenge is if something comes through that meets these requirements. It it meets the requirements, so I mean, it it is, it it's important to have these things. In the land development regulations adopted, so when it comes through you guys, if it goes as a major site plan review. That you know that it has to meet these standards, because you you can't really like kind of pull additional that aren't in in here. So eh, but as shown, we we do will require um in the or some of these are guidelines. Like, and some of them are requirements, like we want to make sure people have the dumpsters enclosed. And shielded from the public right of way, because we know on some of the existing older buildings, it isn't, and it's not a good situation. So anything new going in there won't have that issue luckily, um but then we have suggestions like wood siding. Brick or stone should remain unpainted. And roofs that are not flat should should be standing uh seen metal, um because there's some metal roof buildings. A second floor and above porches may protrude into the front setback and are encouraged to create a more pedestrian friendly environment. Because some some of the buildings do have the the porches. And exterior lighting should enhance the old Floridian fishing village aesthetics such as caged and hooded metal lighting fixtures, so.
Yeah, I thi- I think you did a good job addressing that stuff, uh you know, those design guidelines. And it it does lay it out at the beginning of section D one thirteen two, you know, should have some character to it. Should conform the historical Floridian fishing village style. Um decorative elements, well, I mean, I think and the facade rhythms, I think that that does. Give rise to the ability for the city to say, hey, this isn't going to fit here aesthetically. Because of this, and this this is in the, will be in the codes. So I think it does give it a little bit of latitude for the city to say now that, you know, you can't build just a box here and sell trinkets.
Yeah, so I guess that's my question, though, like. Who and when does should get enforced, you know what I mean? Like. The standards are clear, obviously, but. Saying it should look like a Floridian fishing village doesn't tell me it has to. I'm not saying that people would, and I'm not saying that, you know what I mean, like. The likely story is anyone building something there is going to try to make it fit the character, I mean, God forbid, but I just don't. You know, you. Should should is just hard.
I understand what you're saying. I I I totally get it, you know, we're we're, we don't have a whole lot of projects to have like an architectural committee. You know, to oversee all this and review it. Clearwater has the same situation and the staff administers it. So the staff has that watchful eye to make sure that whatever is designed meets the intent of the code. So uh I think the staff is charged to to look out for that.
Oh, and 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 we want to make sure, because we we get your concerns and it's kind of unfortunate. Uh uh previous planning efforts didn't focus on on doing more of that, especially in in town center, but um. Or you should learn learn from kind of previous mistakes and and you try to uh uh fix them, so. Feel, I definitely feel like uh like compared to previous efforts, this like kind of really focused to look on on. Trying to reduce the risk of those mistakes happening again, but um. We'll have to bring in the like a. Like, the site plan review thing would need to be a se- separate ordinance, um but we we could. I mean, if you want more things to be able to come through, like, for example, it says thirteen units. It qual makes it qualifies as a major site plan review. We could obviously reduce that to a lower number. So it triggers it sooner.
Yeah, well, I mean, I I guess my thing is, as long as it's.
Yeah.
That can be filtered and captured, that's fine. That's, I was just posing the question, because it just seems like. We got a lot of input and we got a lot of guidelines and and standards and things that people want, and I'd hate for it to just like. Not be enforceable, eh you know, if if the public wanted, hey, we want it to look like this, and then. Ultimately, when someone comes to review it and it's like, well. Yeah, you say should, but I don't, you know what I mean? Like, you know, it's it's not entirely impossible, so.
I agree completely, and another set of, another seven sets of eyes on this stuff is very good. Of seven sets of residential eyes, and in terms of some of this stuff is, i- i- it's excellent. But I think what we could maybe even do is put this throughout the city. You know, so this is the guidelines for John's Pass Village. I mean, you know, and I think we should have some some criteria also for the rest of this stuff in the rest of the city. And as I've gone through some of the magistrate's hearings. I feel we should see things that gets approved by the magistrate. As an example, there was a five and a half foot offset on a property. So now they're gonna have five and a half foot offset, so they're gonna have a structure running to five and a half feet. All along the edge of their property. The other side was six and a half feet, so. You you know, and and you guys do a good term, good job that you met in the middle of odd shaped lots. Well, I would say a good third of our properties are odd shaped lots. So but to have somebody, you know, keep from these massive structures going in. You know, and and this is residential, I mean, you know, but if you have a five and a half foot setback on one side, then the other residence gets a. Five and a half foot setback, so now we're the concrete jungle. I mean, you know, they're huge, huge buildings. And and that's where I think Matt's trying to get a little bit of input, and I agree completely. I think there should be another set of eyes on these things. And if you could quantify it by if it goes in front of the magistrate or special circumstances. Then it's got to come in front of the planning committee, because we're planning for what the city is supposed to be.
If I could, if I could jump in, I think I think we have two conversations at once, so. And and I know we want to have it, because we wanted to have it last month, so we'll get to there, but to stay focused on this topic. I did want to point out, which I think is something you were looking for, on page thirty-six. Um section D one one three, the end of the first paragraph says that guidelines are recommended while standards are required. So there are certain things in here that are standards, so if it hits major site. Um it comes here, you will have the power to say you have to do that. You're right, some things are suggested. And that's kind of the way it has to work and kind of kind of work with that, but there are some some definite guidelines in here um that will help you do that.
Yeah, yeah, one, A through G are are the standards, so these are like, it must. Meet these requirements. Um the other thing we did to avoid that concrete jungle. Thing on on a side note, so for example, in the commercial core district for corner lots with a side yard along a street. The side setback along the street must be ten feet, so no matter what, you're gonna have some space. Along a public right of way, so you won't have a building right right up on on a side street, so.
And you have the the step backs for the multi-story as well, and that's not a guideline, that's a requirement, right?
Like, they they have to.
Like in commercial core, if you're looking at this chart with the colors on it. The last one under setback D under commercial core for multiple story buildings, ten foot minimum step back. Behind the primary facade of the building is required for stories above the second floor, so you won't just get that massive wall, right? The giant wall, so at least there's some stepping back and then the facade requirements for the rhythm of the facade and things. I think it's pretty fairly addressed.
Yeah, so like something like, like as I said, like the Cambria couldn't be built down in John's Pass, like it just, it wouldn't meet these requirements.
Yeah, I mean, short of having like a whole separate architectural review board or set of requirements, I I think. Things done a pretty good job.
Yeah, I mean, you can't standardize everything.
Right, we have nothing, there's nothing standard here, our town, part of the problem, we have very little standard anything.
But I guess to that point and what we're talking about, what's in this draft, what is the next step on? Like. Opportunities to incorporate other things that we might find important, like I know we're gonna, this draft is going to forward Penellas and then. Kind of what's the next?
I I mean, it would, I mean, it would come back for uh. Public hearing and we we'd have to advertise for for it. But I'd I'd have to talk with Jenny about when she think. I mean, since it could take a couple of weeks for Ford Penellas, it it could potentially end up being more. Like August than than July, but um I I mean, I. We're I'm taking feedback now, tonight, and even you can email us and. Suggest things, just um but what eh until like, until you guys actually. Vote on it and 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 pass it at a public hearing to go to the board. You guys still have opportunity to give feedback and change things in it. So. As of right now, it's just a discussion item and and rough draft form, so you you guys don't have to worry about voting on anything tonight, so.
Right.
So you have time to to kind of digest it more if if you need to also.
Yeah, there's a lot here, for sure.
It's pretty in intense.
So that would be all of seventy, that's in the packet. All of those things are are kind of penciled in. And we're going to, excuse me, go through these and give you more input next month. I guess, and then you're going to present it to Penellas County?
No, no, I I mean, they don't have, they only have to review it to make sure it meets the countywide rules. They don't have to vote on anything with it. Because this is our land development regulation, this is like local, it's just more of a a ni- nice, nice thing to do. Just make sure it meets the countywide rules, they're happy with it, we get their their. Blessing, just just because sometimes previously the city didn't go to four. So we, but we've been much better about doing that now to make sure that they're good and happy with any anything we do related to. For planning and zoning, so.
Well, would it make sense to present this like it is and then let them script it up and say, no, this isn't acceptable, this isn't acceptable? I mean, you're, and I'm just asking you in terms of, it's it seems pretty good to me. I mean, you know, as I read through it and seeing everything, it's it's everything that we really. I've believed that we've looked for, and you guys have gotten together with the, you know, all the meetings that were held. And you've got all the feedback and you made it concise and 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 pretty good. So, you know, I.
So you know, Forward Penellas is really only interested in density and intensity.
Yeah, and and.
Rest is up to this community right here.
Yep, yeah, because they'll just check density and intensity and 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 maybe uses, but mostly density and intensity, that's that's. What they care about, but um so it it really is up to the community. And ano- another thing as a side process that's going on is we're gonna have uh our first workshop for the master plan. Later in the month, um and we'll be advertising for that shortly. That would be more likely to impact the rest of the city and have us. I have suggestions of what would we, we would later do in separate ordinances and revise our L LDRs. Because we we would like to have other standards in different parts of the city, but. I guess the challenge is we want to do all these things, but then we have to do all the, we have to do all these ordinances to do those things. So it ends up being like we only could do one thing or one or couple of things at a time, but usually like a thing like this, this this takes up a lot of. Time, so until this like passes, it's tough to like. Go on to like the next stuff and 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 bring out for other zoning districts and. And I and I think the master plan is uh Kim Lee Horn has had a lot of experience with like design standards and guidelines for like. For communities, so I think what they 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 suggest and like. Will probably be be pretty good stuff that will be able to eventually bring his uh ordinance for L uh update our LDRs. But um I I agree, I I would like to have standards in other parts of the city also. Um but unfortunately, this or it's just focused on John's Pass, so um.
Right, and with the planning commission, we can always make suggestions. When the plans come before us, like I remember when the Barefoot Beach Resort came before the planning commission. We worked with them, they brought the plans, the community was involved, and they wanted the parking lot. South side moved over the building, because the residents are right there.
Yeah.
So it's just parking, but as the planning commission, we made a motion, we'll accept the plans. And part of the motion was, we know you have a seawall, but we still want you to put sea oats out back there. And then, okay, so the motion passed, it went to the board, the board just dropped it, the commissioners didn't vote on that, didn't make them do it, so. That's where we're limited here with what we can, we can make the suggestions, but we're appointed, we're not elected. And the the ultimate decision is up to them, like if you have the seawall, you don't need sea oats, and they just. Doesn't make sense to me. I think we should have sea oats up and down the beach unless it's a beach access. And that protects the whole community, but we never seem to get anywhere with that. But we worked with them and the Barefoot Beach people worked with us, and then finally, you know, they got it done.
Alright, anyone else have anything else? Any other discussion on the village? Good, alright, um we have one more item on our penciled into our agenda. Mr. Conley had something, please, sir.
Hi, everybody. You've heard me talk about this before, about us getting more power and having a decision just like what Mr. Leroux was just saying. Now that we have everybody here, we can basically kind of get a feeling and get a, some kind of consensus of what everybody thinks. And what I mean by more power, more chew is just like what Michael just said, that it went upstairs, the commissioners, and they didn't hold their feet to the fire to plant the sea oats. I'd like to try to make something that where we had a final decision on a lot of this, of where all of this is going. Because it's all going to come through here. And if we don't have some kind of say, that it's just going to end up, like you're not going to want to see that. So, you're smiling because you know I'm right. So, so, um, I don't know how to do this, how to change the, what we don't have to what we could have. So that's why I'm asking all of you, how do you feel about this?
Can I jump in before?
Please, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you to jump in, so go ahead.
Trying to figure out how to start it. So it depends on what you want, what you want. If you're looking for, um, we want wording in the code that we can say, the planning commission can, it won't even not that way anymore. You want wording in the code that says you have to have the sea oats, which I think what your example was, you could have a seawall or a sea oats. They chose a seawall. You guys said, well, we'd like to have sea oats too. And they said, oh, okay. Well, my guess is I had nothing to do with it. The commission went, we can't require that because the code doesn't require them to do both. So part of it is what's in your code, which is like what you're seeing today. There's a change in the code, they bring it to you guys for your input. When it becomes part of the code, then you can hold someone accountable to those standards. So that's one thing is changing the code or recommending changes come being made to the code that you can force those requirements that you want. The other thing I think I've heard you talk about is you wanted to see more. Okay, and to see more, I think Andrew mentioned earlier, they're thinking about bringing the site, major site plan or some, something back to, to look at that. So maybe there will be more stuff that comes through. That'll be a discussion that might bring more before you. But again, even if it comes before you, if your code doesn't require what you think it should require, the first con, so there are kind of two conversations, if that makes sense. I'm not telling, and of course ultimately it's going to be up to the commission, what they grant or don't grant. Either more review power and I don't, I don't know what other process they would want you to review other than major site plans. Um, you definitely don't want to be here every day, all day, sitting in, sitting with them downstairs reviewing everything, right? You don't want to go that extreme. Um, so I think that's why the division is there, that the major, major site plans need to be looked at. And that's why they come to you now, whether it's decided that those standards should be lessened. So you see more, that conversation, it sounds like you're going to have when they are ready to present that to you.
Yeah, it'd have to be a separate ordinance from this. And it's important to remember, remember that like getting this ordinance done, the John's Pass, would mean that you'd have more projects coming through that, that might hit that, that major like site plan threshold. Because it is, that's what I, I mean, like pretty much anything non-residential that's like over two thousand square feet, a building area or, and it has like more than twenty-one parking spaces would come through for you guys. So if someone did a small boutique hotel with a ground floor restaurant or something in John's Pass, that would, you guys would have to review it and it would have like a neighborhood meeting also. So even as of right now, if you, if this, our board adopted eventually when they adopt whatever zoning ordinance, this is already in our code, so you, you guys would end up seeing it anyways. I, I guess the thing is there's projects that were kind of on the borderline that were under the threshold. But like, like for example, like there's a, someone building a, like a single family home down, down on Pelican that most likely will be used for vacation rentals. But it is, it is a one unit, but it is a nine bedroom home. It's a big house, but it is just one unit.
So I, I think one of the things to your point that's important is to understand what our scope is defining the code. But I think Mr. Connelly is saying we should maybe look at the code to expand that scope. Is that what you're saying? Okay. As it stands now, we have a certain box that we fit in and understanding our authority is just recommendation. And that's as far as we go, which, you know, whatever, it's fine by me. But, um, that's, that's the, that's the chair we sit in at this point is just to say, I think our position is to be a representative of the citizens and using our, as residents, using our knowledge of the town and our, you know, representing the, our neighbors to say, this is what we think is the best, to send that upstairs for the actual vote, because we really don't have that authority. And I don't know where or how, if anything, any of that authority or that scope changes without massive changes to the code. And I think we would be, probably get a lot of pushback.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're like the first filter. It comes through us first and I don't know if anybody's been on the board. I was for some of these big projects, but there were some angry people out there on what we're deciding to do and they're voicing their opinion and we're listening to them. And we're still making our recommendations. And, uh, you know, some people got ugly out there, you know, out, outside of here too. And it's like, whoa.
And we always, we have the luxury of saying, we don't get to vote on it.
Well, that's, that's, well, that's, that's what I was, the wrap up point was, I've said many times, we're appointed. You gotta, you know, the elected people are the ones that are making the decision. And I think that's where our role as a planning commission is different because we are appointed and not elected. And the elected guys and girls are the ones who ultimately have to make the choices because they are chosen by the votes.
I think with this new, what's being proposed, we are going to see more things because the threshold for becoming a major project has been lessened, right?
Well, that's what's in our code currently. There just hasn't been much proposed down in John's Pass because of the land use and zoning incompatibility issues.
But once the, once this changes, we probably will see more.
Yeah.
Once the John's Pass Activity Zone, if it were to pass and be accept, be adopted, we probably would, would see more things because it's going to open up some other opportunities that then fall within this major redevelopment category.
Yeah.
Did you ever see Jeff's plans on Pelican Lane?
Well, I did, yeah, but not this.
Because you're a realist.
Yeah.
But.
It's one unit though, that's what I.
Yeah, that's the thing, it's only one unit.
We never, we never even saw that.
Yeah, well.
And that's what I'm basically saying.
Yeah, that was by right, so he.
Okay.
And, and state preempts us on single family and.
Last workshop, I had a gentleman talk to me on the way out. And he said to me, the old veterans, uh, uh, the dog hospital.
Yeah.
Is getting a four story building. And he said, do you know anything about it? I have nothing, no, no knowledge.
That actually is going to be coming in front of you.
So what's happening is.
That's coming before you guys, you'll see that.
Yeah, that did trigger, it just, it bare, it hit the major site plan review threshold barely, but it hit it.
That's not, all right, I understand that's going to come, but there's other things that are, have been done that we never even saw.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's what, so where's the planning?
Well, technically the planning's been done, right? By, by the codes that we have. And the example that one on Pelican Lane, I don't think anybody's more affected by that than me personally, sitting here. Because I'm looking right at it. Um, and there's really nothing that, there's nothing really that could be changed because of the preemption from Pinellas County, because it is technically a single family home. And there's nothing that a planning board can do to modify that.
We are, we are actually reducing, proposing to reduce the height a little bit. Right now it is forty-four feet from DFE because it's zoned R3. So we are proposing to reduce it to thirty-four feet from DFE to the Evlon. So any, anything new that gets built there, like basically the living space would be within that thirty-four feet. And then whatever architectural features on the roof or, or AC units or whatever, would, could be above that thirty, with, but no living space above that. So we, we are actually proposing to reduce it a little bit to kind of keep that contained. Um, with that one, that it is, I think it is just rooftop access on that, which is within that threshold. But we wanted, we wanted to make sure to, and, and also I think we did require, let me pull up the step back requirements. Because I, I think we did, we're, we are going to start requiring, proposing to require step backs actually. Yeah, so for a multi-story building, a ten foot minimums, and this is in the low intensity mixed use where that building's currently being built. What we have proposed is for mul, for multiple story buildings, a ten foot minimum step back behind the primary facade of the building shall be required for floors above the third floor for portions of a building facing or bordering a public right of way. So.
So, yeah, there's standards and there's codes and there's that, right? Against by right development. And by right, which I think is good, is a good thing. You know, they can, they can build what they want to build. What I do hear is the consistent word is recommendation. I think like that's the power that we have is the power of recommendation. So to me, but it also sounds like there's a little bit of an interest or a lot of bit of an interest in a like, I don't want to say architectural review board, because I just think sometimes maybe that's a lot. But there's an interest in something adjacent to that, right? Is there a vehicle, is the, do we have a vehicle on the behalf of the public to recommend that there is a discussion about the development of that? And if it were to fall into, you know what I mean? Like actually have a discussion with the public about that in this kind of setting? Or is that reserved to like the commissioner meeting only? Because it sounds like if it's like an idea that we're having, because we keep running into it because we're here and the public isn't necessarily here all the time and we feel like it's important, yet we still have to get public input. You know, is there a way to say, hey, you know, we, we'd like to recommend like a formalized discussion on an agenda with the public's involvement about, you know, proposing that kind of vehicle or ordinance to the commissioners? Is that something that can happen?
A lot can happen, but yeah, I, I think I finally, I think towards the end, I finally, I finally caught on. So, so a lot can happen, whether it will or not, of course, is a different conversation. But I, so I think what you're asking is if there's a way for the planning commission to make, can make, to make an agenda item about this conversation, so the public knows you're going to have it, so they can come and say, yes, we agree, we don't agree. And this is what we think. Your problem still, the starting point still is you have the authority granted to you by the commission, right? They need, they need, depending on what, what you're looking for, either your code has to change to give you specific requirements that you can hold people to that come before you, like, like some of the requirements and what you saw today. So it's still a code change, which would be ordinance, public meetings, you, ultimately the commission, all that same, same process. If you're looking for whether it somehow to give you, I don't want to use power, but that you would review more items or that you would see more items, it's going to depend. It's first of all, the commission's going to have to prove it. The, the, um, um, items that were mentioned, I think Chuck mentioned them about, um, the special magistrate. You guys aren't going to see those, those are variances, those are special exceptions. Those are not for a planning commission, a planning board. By law, they're going somewhere else. That's why you're not going to see those. Um, you can go see them, but you're not going to hear them. Now, sometimes those things will come together and you may.
How about afterwards? See, and I'm not looking, you know, in terms of, okay, so if, if there's a variance done, that's when it could trigger that, okay, so the variance is going to be done and approved and all of that. So could we then see what is being proposed from the variance?
If, if it qualifies as a major, yeah, if it triggers a major site plan review like the Sanderling does, you guys will see it.
Yeah, so again, it's just as of right now, it's the way your code is written. Um, so that's, that's where you have to go. So I don't, so the answer, the easy answer to your question is if the city manager wants to put it as an agenda item, it can be an agenda item and there can be a discussion, right? But where the, where that first discussion should happen is here, is it with the, the commission? That's for them to kind of figure out. Uh, I think the first question might be, and I don't know, this is chicken or the egg, right? Where it's kind of like, where do we go first? Does the commission want to have this conversation, which would probably be the first thing the city manager is going to figure out.
We're not in a position to define our scope.
No, you can't define your scope, you can't demand that the commission define your scope. There, there's limits to what you can do, but there's also, um, language that you serve at the pleasure of the commission. And sometimes they can give you more than what you have right now, depending on what they're asking you to do. So, um, you know, obviously we talked about if the requirements for what triggers a site, a major site, site. Yeah, you know, but that all of a sudden, now you guys are going to say, man, you have us here all night, we're too busy, right? But there are things that you could do, um, should the commission want to, that does trigger, um, more things coming before you possibly. Um, but it doesn't, you're never going to see everything and that's just the way it's going to happen. I mean, that's just the way it is in any city.
I don't want to see everything.
It sounds like, it sounds like in summary, this is a conversation that I think some of us would like to have
Yes.
in the city. Yet that conversation has to either come from, you know, that topic has to either come from the city manager, which probably not going to happen. And then, or from the board of commissioners, right? It has to be said, hey, we want this to take place, which is not something that we can do. So, um, I think it would be nice to be the vehi, to be the vehicle for that conversation just because we're the ones that see these things come across and to be involved in that and to have the public and everyone here talking about it would be great. But it sounds like we can't really, it's not really a conversation we're really allowed to have unless it's kind of told to us, hey, we want you to have it, right? I mean, is that, is that essentially what I'm?
I think at this point you, it needs to become an agenda item and I, I.
We don't create.
You don't create the agenda, does the city manager control the agenda? Do you guys?
The board, board does.
Board does.
And I guess the same, man, for, for what it's worth though, the, the current board and our current city manager, uh, have, have been uh, pretty, um, like, I, compared to previous boards, they had, like, they're not, they, they've been much more closely looking at new development compared to other boards that were very pro develop. This one is, is, they're, they're, they're much more, um, willing to, um, work, so, um, listen to the residents' concerns and, 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 and put the residents first versus putting the developer first. So I, I, I feel, at least as of right now, I, I wouldn't be, uh, as, because of our current board or being, being very excessively pro development. But I, it's usually either the board brings it up or the city manager, like, like it'd come up at a BOC workshop. But I, I know we do want to look at updating our site, the site plan review section as a separate ordinance and then, and then potentially updating our, the, the PD section um, to, to change, change some, some things in it. What's interesting is in the Duane Plan actually proposed the plan development idea, but it had set, um, standards related to like setbacks, height limits. And for some reason, the part of it they adopted was the plan development, but not as much about the height limits and setbacks. Because as I said, the max height in the Duane Plan proposed was, was at five stories over one floor parking on, on the, on, on, in the R3 zoning. So which the PD doesn't, uh, or in its current form, doesn't really reference, uh, height, height limits. More references other things of similar size and scale. But, um, I, I'll have to talk, Jenny is currently out of town. So I, I, I can get the gist of it. You guys want more input when, when we, we have, have new development in the city.
Maybe it's also something to bring up to the board of commissioners during the public remarks, right? And any one of us as residents can get up there and say, hey, this is, we're, we're serving this capacity. Here's an idea that was discussed. And just for your deliberation, then they maybe workshop it and.
And I, I was going to say also, as Andrew's can, I'll let Jenny know, I'll let Tom Trask know that this conversation happened and if they have any different ideas about. And I, I was going to say also, as Andrews can, I'll let Jenny know, I'll let Tom Trask know that this conversation happened and if they have any different ideas about. A method to bring that conversation forward. We will get back to you, but my, I think, I think. This is kind of it, like you have. Public comment might help.
Yeah.
City manager knowing about the issue would help, um, but here collectively.
Yeah.
There's not much you can do except to say, we, we all, yeah, we all agree, we would like to change something, understanding there's kind of different avenues. If you're looking for specific teeth in your code, that's one way. You want to review more, that's a different thing. You want both, that's fine, but understand there's different, different avenues to get where you're going. Um, and it's just finding a way there, should the commission want you to do either of those things.
And I think basically what I'm trying to say is. Once. The building, the new building gets done on Pelican Lane by you guys. I understand it's going to be. You know, he's going to put some schmaltz in it, you know, whatever. So. Once that's finished. And we've already basically seen Karnes' building, the new restaurant, the front part of it. On John's Pass is fantastic, the backside is terrible because. That's where eighty percent of the people are going to drive up to. That is what they're going to see. They're going to see a backside of a building. Now, if you go down Pelican Lane. The backside of Pelican Lane. Is horrible. The front side is fabulous. That's where the tourists are, okay? But what I'm getting at is, once Jeff's building gets done and it meets our criteria. That we want to basically kind of keep that. Throughout the whole activity center. In other words, that kind of look. That kind of finish. And let everybody try to outdo each other, so we have a, a fantastic looking. Community down there.
Yeah, and I think, I think the thing is, is this becomes the natural. Forum for this conversation, but unfortunately it always is like. You, you get the, the PD shows up and it's like, you're behind the curve because it's like, well, we're here, we're here to get approved or whatever. Or a recommendation for approval. Um. So it's just a little, it's like, I think we keep having this conversation because it's like every single time one of these comes in, we're like, wait, why didn't we see this before? And I think. But I, I think based on the authority that has been defined and it sounds like. We should, if, if we really want that, we as citizens, not just board members, probably need to start asking questions like, can we have this conversation? Can this become a real item? Because we keep, we keep running into it and this is like the natural place where it gets run into the most, right? So.
And.
I mean, I, I would be in favor of like, you know, reaching out and trying to see if we can. Get that combo started.
Well, I think also John had the kind of question, is everybody willing here of the seven of us to be taking on more things? You know, because like, if there's only two or three of us that are willing to do that, then we, you know.
Vacate it.
Yeah.
So.
Don't leave me.
I mean, I think, I think. There's limits to everything, right? I just, it's more of. Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's where the conversation comes into play because maybe someone in the public has a really good idea as to how to handle it and maybe it becomes a totally separate entity. I mean, who, who knows? I. Um, I don't think it necessarily has to happen here. Um, but I, on the concept of. That kind of review process happening, I would, I would be generally in favor of something like that.
Makes sense.
You know.
You have something.
Personally. Yeah, I mean, and just want to say, you know, on behalf of me, um, city staff, I have no objections bringing as much in front of you guys as you're willing to see and weigh in on. I, I love, have more sets of eyes on stuff, especially as we get into more. Trickier things that come up or stuff you just would, so for city staff, you know, we would understand if things go that way and be supportive of. You know, and be more inclusive. Um, and we do have very savvy land use attorneys who know when they're submitting with a developer what they're required to do. And what they're not, so if we were to say, you know, geez, our planning commission would really love to see this sooner, they'd be like, mm, we don't have to do that. So, you know, it, it, as much as we would love to sometimes throw it to you guys a little sooner so that you don't feel blindsided, um. We reckon, I, I personally recognize the time that you guys are putting in and I appreciate it, we get some really good feedback. So I completely understand why you would want more teeth and your voice to go a little further, so I just want you guys to know from, from my perspective. Um, I absolutely know what you're going for, um, and figuring out how to get there. Through our ordinances and through all the proper channels is probably the hurdle we're up against, but I, I hear you and I know why you want it and what you want, so. And.
Cool. Yeah. Good, Mr. Connolly, that satisfy your.
Yeah.
Desire for the moment, anyway? And get, get the conversation started, I think it's good stuff.
Make, make sure to be involved with the.
How do you all feel about it?
I think we're all in agreement that we'd like to be involved as much as we can and, and within the scope that we're permitted, right? And if that scope needs to be changed by some other authority, maybe that's where we start, you know? Bring that to the city commission and let them workshop it and see where they want to go with it, whether it requires another. Board of some variety, I don't know, or if it puts more on our plate, then so be it. Yeah. Cool.
I've got something back to the village in terms of. Uh, is property owned from the property line to the CCCL? And can anything be built? And I'm going back to, uh, let's see here.
You can definitely own past the CCCL, but there's restriction on what you can do with it.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, and that's what, there's quite a few of the properties right there on the water. I mean, you know, and as we're losing some of the water beach rights. Does something need to be defined? You know, and basically I'm trying to, I'm not sure if it's in the transitional area or it's the um. Transitional and John's Pass Resort, I think it's a transitional. No, it's actually John's Pass. You've got all these houses that own property beyond the CCC, CCCL line. So can they build to their property line or is it just to the CCCL line?
They, they can't build beyond the co- uh, county coastal control line.
Well, I mean, you know, and, and I, I understand, you know. You say that, but is there anywhere that it's written?
That's a federal.
Going beyond the.
That's a federal thing.
If, if I may, um, any, any construction, waterwards of CCC line would have to be approved by DEP.
Yep.
Correct.
FD P.
Yeah.
By my, my, my protection. Um. Case in point would be Moby Mats, for instance, we have done a few Moby Mats along the beaches. And anything waterwards of coastal construction, construction control line, you'd have to.
You can just say the line, we'll know what you mean. It's a tongue twister.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah, so we, there are, you, you know, and we're seeing that the articles going around next door and whatever, the posts about Reddington where people are saying you can't be on my beach because I own up to the high watermark. Well, you obviously can't build anything out there. You, your lot line may be described as going out to the high watermark well beyond the line. But you can't do anything with it, you can't build anything, any permanent structure beyond that line.
Yeah.
Preservation.
Right.
Yeah, there might, might.
And that line moves.
Yeah.
That, that's not a static line either, it, it, the uh, DEP can decide they want to move it landward. And then what's in there can stay, but if it has to be replaced.
It's moved a couple times.
Yeah.
Yeah. During my lifetime.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and there, there might be some non-conforming stuff that, that might be built over, but that wouldn't be allowed if it had to be rebuilt, so. Um, ke- keep that if, in mind, like, if you see something that, well, it might just be like illegally, non-conforming. You, you, use, but if it had to be rebuilt, they wouldn't be allowed to do that again, so.
Okay. Um, that hit what you wanted?
Yep.
Now, who, she brought us some pictures?
Yes.
Yep.
Are we allowed to just add stuff without it being on the agenda since it's not posted or we, if it's just discussion, I don't want to get us in trouble?
I could, no, yes, so. It kind, ye- yes, you can.
I mean, there's nothing we're voting on or anything.
You can talk about stuff that's not on the agenda, but the, the question then becomes if you want to, and I don't know what it is, so I'll, I'll start, that, that's not going to affect what I'm saying.
I'm not sure what it is either.
The idea is, the agenda, the point of it is to let the public know what you're going to talk about, so they can be part of that discussion and have their three minutes or more to, to, to talk with you about that topic, so. If it's something that you think would be better off being an agenda item. You could move it and ask it to be an agenda item, again, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm assuming it's the city manager that controls that, whoever controls that, it's not me.
Sure.
Um, and that way.
That's what I was trying to be sensitive to, I don't want to overstep our bounds.
So it's not wrong, but sometimes there's certain things you really want to make sure the public knows you're.
How about like a high level of what this is about and then we'll survive from there?
It, it is, I mean, this is not, this is.
If I can jump in on this one, because we went through this before. And when Linda was here, we voted as the planning commission that we wouldn't bring anything day of. You would send an email to Linda and then she would approve it and put it on the agenda so that we know what's coming. And we're not just looking at a piece of paper, sitting here going, what is this for? And then we have, you know, we couldn't research, so. We kind of voted on it before and the planning commission voted that that's the way we would handle these. So that way we would know and not just be here for hours talking about whatever topic and then another one and it just keeps rambling on.
How about you give us a minute or two synopsis of what we're going to talk about at the next meeting?
Really, it just recommends to put some like truncated domes in John's Pass, that's all it is. That's, that's all that is.
And this is for access?
Yes, ADA accessibility, yeah, just, just uh, just a note, uh, for instance, there's a handicap sign that doesn't, doesn't meet code and there aren't really any. Truncated domes at, at ramps, so it just basically. Bringing a little bit of attention that maybe we should take a look and. Um, put some truncated domes in some areas, it's nothing big.
So this is more informational for.
Yeah, we, we don't.
Enforcement or for planning department to look into? You're welcome. I, I mean, I don't know, that's within our scope, right? Um, good information and I'm totally on board with, you know, making it, the pass as acceptable as possible.
Do it.
Yeah.
Might need to talk with public work.
Why am I not surprised?
Um, yeah, we can get with, we'll get with engineering, public works, planning and we'll all bring this to our attention and get, get this on our radar, yeah, and some of it, obviously.
Just a little note.
Appropriate, that, that fit what we need, okay, cool. Without crossing boundaries of non-agenda items being on the agenda and things like that. Try to be sensitive to that, thank you for the explanation.
We know there was a, a vote in a public.
Forgot about that, I remember talking about that a couple years ago.
Legally, yes, you can do what you just did, policy wise, it sounds like, no, you cannot.
Okay, so that didn't happen, everyone, anybody who's listening. Alright, um, anything else for the good of the order here, the good of the city, I don't see anything. So our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July one at six PM, uh, right here at the same location, hope to see all of your smiling faces here again.
Well, not see mine, but someone will be here.
Aw, well, we'll miss you terribly. And uh, thanks for all you do for us, by the way, thank you, and thank you guys for putting together a really good presentation, letting us know what's going on. And we really appreciate that and I know it's a lot of effort, so thank you on our behalf. Thanks, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.